Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start, John will be here in just a minute. Uh, we're gonna do the invocation, Miss Couch, you wanna do that, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, under the chairman's report, we have got our digest in. Our full rollback rate is eight point three nine. Our proposed rate, mileage rate next year will be eight point three. It was eight point four last year, so it will be a reduction. And a lot of people should see a lot because the, uh, digest was also down. Zach, you got anything you wanna add to that, Zach? He is the chief appraiser.
Total digest was down.
Total digest was down.
There have been some major adjustments that were made, especially if you look into the city of Bremen, there was a correction that needed to be made. We made that correction this year. I will say, we understand that land in many of the areas throughout the county continues to be undervalued, and that is an issue that we are working as fast as we can to resolve. We believe we will have that resolved for twenty twenty-five. But the major change in the digest this year can be seen in both Bremen and Buchanan, and those are largely due to there was a correction with residential improvements.
Okay. You have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But the, the mileage rate will be lower this coming year than it was last year. Department reports. Terry, you gonna give us a, a price supposedly on the rumble strips at one thirteen and Morgan Road?
Yes, sir, I've reached out to several contractors and the cheapest price I have is twenty-two fifty per lane.
Per lane?
Which would be a forty-five hundred dollar, uh, cost on, on that.
Is the state also gonna put rumble strips on one thirteen?
No, sir, I've been working with them throughout the last couple of weeks. They're gonna put some larger signs and do some updates on their portion of it. But on our portion, that, that's the most that we can do.
Still gotta have more accidents before anything's done.
That's my understanding.
Do we have stop ahead signs on Morgan East and West before you actually get stop sign?
Yes, sir.
And the rumble strips would be somewhere in between those signs now?
Well, they, they're positioned by G dot specifications, you know, for the miles, miles per hour on the road.
All right, and how aggressive rumble strips come in a whole variations of?
Top that I've, I've looked at, it's not as aggressive as far as the sound.
Yeah.
Whether they're thermoplastic, which is a high mileage rate of thermoplastic, which is, that's I can relate to as an epoxy, so to speak. So it's not as aggressive far as sound wise, but it is aggressive to, to catch, to, you know.
Drivers.
Drivers' attention, right.
Okay.
What'd you say that price was?
Forty-five hundred for the total.
That's east and west.
Right.
Yeah, that's within my realm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we wanna add vote on that tonight, or?
We can add that in on the agenda?
Yeah, we can add it to the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that, Terry.
Thank you.
That's actually something the chairman could.
Oh, yeah.
I can do that without a vote. Unless y'all just wanna add, vote on it, we can get it done. You wanna vote on it, Danny?
The chairman take care of it.
Okay. Approval of the previous minutes, everybody's had opportunity to look at the, the minutes of the previous meetings. If there's anything you wanna add or take away, change you wanna make. Here and none, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, show right hand? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. And item number nine, I would like to add an executive session over a land acquisition. Anybody else wanna make any changes? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, show right hand? Motion carried. Public participation on agenda items? Have none. Okay. Item number one is proclamation for rural transit day. I think we've got some transit drivers here. Uh, y'all wanna step up? Commissioner Farmer's gonna read the resolution.
Bobby Drive.
Yeah.
Whereas affordable, reliable public transit is an essential public service. An increased community access to public transit, reduction in transportation disparities, cleaner air, and increased opportunities for employment and good jobs form a key part of an equitable, sustainable, and regenerative economy. And one of the fundamental roles of transit is strengthening the social determinants of health. Therefore, be it resolved that the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners supports the call to observe Rural Transit Day on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's resolved that the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners will draw attention to the continuing need for affordable and accessible transit through Rural Transit Day, and that the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners will use Rural Transit Day to highlight the vital role that can be played by the expansion of public transit to help build healthy, resilient, and thriving communities. Finally, be it resolved that the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners will support legislation at the federal, state, and local levels that increases public funding for rural transit, increases funding to support the transition to low or no emission vehicles and infrastructure, increases the accessibility of public transit for seniors and persons with disabilities, increases funding for ADA complimentary para-transit to ensure that it's reliable, timely, and affordable, prioritizes the improvement of transportation coordination locally and across agencies, increases the availability and connectivity of intercity bus service in rural areas, reduces barriers such as vehicle procurement delays and securing local match that present transit agencies from providing transit service to meet the demand, increases job opportunities in rural transit systems, and finally enables the hiring of formerly incarcerated people and other marginalized populations for appropriate transit jobs. Which one of you fine folks would like to accept us on behalf of the Carol, of the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners? But we appreciate the job that y'all do, and we know that you play a vital service in our community.
Do they come with Walmart gift card?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they do a real good job and not a lot of money, but we appreciate what they do. Item number two is proclamation for participation with keep Harrelson beautiful, greatest American cleanup. Uh, Ms. Priest came by this afternoon and got this proclamation, so, uh, if you want to, we'll just move on.
Okay.
Item number three, Judge Roper's request for funding to paint the Harrelson County courthouse. I thought I seen Judge Roper.
He's in.
Get up, tell us what plans you have.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. You'll have to forgive me, I did not plan to speak tonight. I actually just learned that this was on the agenda and thought I'd come by and see everybody. Captain Chandler of the Harrelson County Sheriff's Department and I have spoken several times at the courthouse about its need for some touch-ups, some paint, and whatnot. He has graciously volunteered his time and services to make that happen at no cost to the county, as far as labor goes. Uh, what is needed is some financial support for the actual paint and supplies to make that happen. This is a project that, that I personally feel that would increase the county residents' pride in their county building. This is a building, quite frankly, as we all know, that some of, I think as I put in my letter, some of life's most important task and, and things happen in that building. It's probably one of the county's most frequented buildings, if I had to guess. This is just a project that I would like to take on to make the building a little more aesthetic, something that all of the residents of Harrelson County can take pride in.
Are y'all, you gonna paint the inside or the outside?
No, sir, this is, our idea was just, uh, only the outside, right now.
Yeah, 'cause I think they just painted inside not long ago.
Not long ago, yes, sir.
Yeah. So full exterior paint.
Have y'all decided on the color, you gonna paint the brick?
Yes, sir.
Really?
That would be the idea, yes, sir.
I can just make a request, maybe shift away from the yellow tint that we have out there at the moment.
That is also the idea, yes, sir.
Right, why?
Decided the color?
I'm sorry?
You decided on the color?
No, sir, a- as I indicated, this would be something that, uh, obviously I'd be, you know, more than willing to come back to the commission for approval, colors and, and methods and things like that, uh, this.
Price of materials hadn't been discussed either?
It was discussed internally, just with, uh, basically myself and Captain Chandler, and honestly, uh, the estimate I put in my initial correspondence was a, a rough estimate.
Five thousand dollars, I think, was what the estimate would be. That's not firm, that's just estimate.
Have we checked with, uh, I know when we got the county maintenance department painted, we ended up securing a little bit of funding from Home Depot for the paint.
Fantastic.
Have, have we looked into that?
I have not looked at that, no, sir. That's a, that's a fantastic idea, though.
The board would be interested, if you'll get us up some figures and colors.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
I think it's needed.
Yes.
And I like Commissioner Aylesbury's suggestion that, uh, the Home Depot Lowe's connection, um, I wish you would ask.
Sure.
All he can say is no, but, uh, if they'll help with that, that'd be, that would really help the cause of this project.
Of course, absolutely.
Labor free and materials free is hard to turn down.
I agree, I agree.
Wallace's may be worth the conversation too, since they're here in the county and they are a local builder supplier.
That's right.
Um, and then go from there.
I agree.
You got the hardware store as well, in Tallahassee?
Let us bring back some firm information.
Fantastic.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Josh. Resolution to dispose of unserviceable Harrelson County personal property. This is like, uh, adding machines, uh, uh.
AS tables, chairs?
AS tables, chairs, stuff is not worth selling.
The old audiovisual stuff out of the courthouse, the WebEx, it's not being used anymore.
Plus. What?
I, I need to miss a meeting, y'all been somewhere, I haven't been there.
Okay. Well, we redid some visual audio equipment at courthouse. We received a grant, didn't cost the county anything, and it was free. But the equipment that's in the courthouse now, we really have no use for. And the county needs a proper way to dispose of it. And from what we understand from ITech people, there's some other counties that would like to have this equipment. But we can't give it to them and we can't sell it to them without this, uh, resolution, proclamation. What? Oh, no, this is just equipment that's, that's, we're not gonna give away any motivators. We're gonna, uh, hold on to those. But equipment that's not worth anything. What?
Small equipment.
Small stuff, like maybe the chair you're sitting in. Uh, they don't bring a lot of money, it's no point in spending a lot of time trying to sell it. Uh, but right now, we can't dispose of it, there's no way of doing it. And that's what we want this resolution for.
But if somebody else can use it, we can give it to them.
We can give it to them.
Not throw it in the trash.
But I think there'll be a price, uh, uh, limit on it, you know, if it's, uh, but mostly what we're concerned of now, there's some other counties that would like to have that equipment in the courthouse where we've upgraded, we got the grant to upgrade. It didn't cost the county anything, why would we not let another county have that and use it?
How is that new video, Judge? How is that new equipment working? Is it helped with the, uh, uh, when they're at the jail and they got, uh, hearings and they don't have to bring them up here now?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Zoom, what we refer to as Zoom hearings.
Would you step on up to, we're live streaming, we want everybody to hear.
Uh, Zoom hearings have been a constant source of frustration over the last couple of years, or I assume since COVID, as you may attest to as well. Um, this new equipment streamlines that process, makes it so, so much easier to facilitate those type of hearings. As far as the video equipment that was installed, you, you really need, if you haven't seen it, come see it. I mean, it's, it's impressive, it's enormous, the screens are. Um, they, they installed screens at the witness stand, screens on the judge's bench. It's really been a game changer. And, and besides that, besides the actual visual screens, the audio system now with the way the courtroom is mic'd up, we've had issues in the past where frankly, you couldn't hear each other. Couldn't hear witnesses, or couldn't, lawyers couldn't hear witnesses, witnesses couldn't hear lawyers. That seems to have gone away at this point, so excellent addition.
Thank you. And the best part, it was free.
Yeah, and that is the best part, is that it was.
Due to the grant that the judges worked to get.
And, uh, the company, I can't remember, recall their name, um, right offhand, but as we've gone through over the last few weeks, I know myself and Judge Murphy have jotted, jotted down notes as we've gone along of any issues that we see. And the company thus far has been very willing and responsive to those issues to come see about them, fix them. It's really been a good thing.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, show a right hand? Okay. Item number five, consideration and approval of an intergovernment, in-government agreement for municipal ad valorem tax collection between Harrelson County Tax Commissioner and the city of Bremen. Uh, what this is gonna do is let the tax commissioner for the county collect the city property taxes for the city of Bremen. Right now, that's not her job, she is collects the county taxes. She's gonna get nine dollars a partial to collect Bremen's taxes, a dollar of which she will get, a dollar her office will get, and seven dollars will go into the general fund of the county. Help with the budget in her office. You'll pay everything, you being a resident of the city of Bremen, you will pay all your taxes over here at the tax commissioner's office. You won't have to go by the city of Bremen to pay, uh, property taxes. School taxes, if that, that's the next one on the agenda, is the school taxes. So you'll get basically one tax bill. It'll have your city tax, county tax, school tax, all on that bill, and you will pay it all at the tax commissioner's office. It's a win-win for everybody. But you live in the city of Bremen, don't you? You live in the city? I can't do the school taxes, but I can tell you what the county taxes are if you ever have a question about that. We don't do school. But, uh, but I think this is something we need to do. Need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the, uh, intergovernmental agreement for the city of Bremen and Harrelson County.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand? Motion carried. Okay. Item number six is consideration and approval of an intergovernment agreement for ad valorem taxes collection between Harrelson County Tax Commissioner and the Bremen public school system. This is the same thing as the property taxes for the city, only she'll be, uh, collecting one point five percent of the Bremen city school, uh, system's taxes. She'll be collecting it all, but she'll be charging one point five. And all that money will go into the county's general fund to help fund the tax commissioner's office. Any discussion? Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, intergovernmental agreement for ad valorem tax collection for Bremen school system and Harrelson County Tax Commissioner.
I'll second.
You get to second?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand? Motion carried. Item number seven is renovation of the old jail. Uh, U Haven has been looking at the old jail as far as using it for a, uh, facility that they need, that they, they think they may be losing the one they've got, and if they're not, they're outgrowing it. And Dennis and, uh, has been asking people what they think would things would cost. Yes, sir. Mr. Dubey? You got a question?
Yep.
Why don't you come on up to the microphone?
Now, I've been to meeting after meeting up here, and we discussed that jail. Not gonna put any more money into it. That's ruined it, bought the new one there. And now they wanting to redo it, spend some money on it, I'm not for that.
Why don't you let us finish, and let's see where we're at before, see if we are approved this. I think you're gonna be happy, uh, but we ain't voted one way or another yet.
I usually wait too late, it's something done before I can get anything done on it.
Maybe you're early this time.
Hold the thing up now, I just don't believe in spending nothing else on that. They say it wouldn't fit the human consumption, and, and staying in there, no, like mold, mildew. That hasn't just passed away, it's still there. So I, I don't, I don't see in digging up a dead horse and starting over on it again.
Okay, thank you. But, uh, they have been considering bids, and we've not, at this point, took, uh, what you call a real proper bid process. We have just got some kind of ideas of what it would cost to just inhabit it for this, uh, project. And I think we figured today, if we took the lowest bids on everything, it would be ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Uh, are we waiting on motions or?
Uh, no, we're, we're just in the, the talking stages. We don't have the bids in the proper format. The only thing we have done so far is just got an idea of what it would cost. Uh, and that's taking the lowest bids that have been, uh, issued. And I don't think we could do it for that, do you, Dennis? For the ninety-eight thousand?
Can we renovate for that?
Yeah. Go over to the microphone.
I have got, uh, so the office part of the jail, the upstairs of the jail, is roughly four thousand square feet. And I have got some good estimates to get these numbers. It wasn't just one guy giving me estimates, I've got multiple estimates on every stage. But, uh, we're at ninety-eight, is what we're averaging. Uh, ninety-eight thousand, we're paying, uh, we're paying nine thousand dollars a year for power there. Um, we have two choices in that building. We run a little bit of air to keep air circulating and keep somewhat climate controlled, or we bulldoze the building down. Because when you leave a building unoccupied with no kind of air, it's not gonna be good. Um, I have heard different comments about that it's full of mold or whatever, mildew. I really hadn't seen anything that was, uh, evident of that. We've had some small roof leaks, uh, over the office area, just where the drains are. But it's really just cosmetic stuff. Uh, it's what we're, what we're addressing to, uh, renovate. Structurally, the building's good. Uh, the roof is probably, we could probably patch it up. Right now, we're looking at getting a coating, is what the estimate was involving. And it was like a twenty-year warranty on it. And it's just a simple silicone coating that, uh, they believe will adhere to it. I believe, I don't know what the number was on that, on the roof coating?
One roof quote was twenty-two thousand nine twelve, and one roof coat was ninety-six thousand two hundred and twenty-five.
So the ninety-six is if we was to tear the roof off and start from nothing. Total re, uh, redoing the whole roof system.
Is that just for that one section out of the three?
Or sixty by seventy, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um,
Was that section done before we left that jail, was it the, uh?
That was the jail side that they did the roof on.
That was the jail side, not the office side, okay, thank you.
And it seems to be holding up pretty good, I don't know, I wasn't here at the time, but I'm guessing that's ten or twelve years old up, up there?
No, be less than that, it's less than eight.
Eight to ten?
It's less than eight.
Okay.
It's more than eight.
I've been here eight.
Well, I got here.
Well, we did the courthouse now. We did the courthouse.
Oh, the courthouse, that's right.
Courthouse does have the same roof on it.
Yeah.
Don't we use, we're, we're currently, we use part of the court, uh, of the jail for the coroner's office, correct?
No.
We're not using it anymore.
The only people that are using the jail is the, uh, fire department at this, at this time. They do, uh, training in the jail downstairs in the basement part. Uh, that's about the only, the only thing I've seen over there going on. So it's about, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for power. And that's minimum lights on, really just egress lighting, and running one air conditioner unit just to keep air moving upstairs. and running one air conditioner unit just to keep air moving upstairs. Anybody else?
That's all we need. Y'all got any questions?
No, sir. I don't.
Has it give us something to think about before the next meeting? Employee raises. Item number eight. I think we ought to use the same formula we did last year. The six percent, three percent, everybody in the department heads determine who gets the other three and who doesn't.
Or any portion of.
Or any portion of. They feel like they should get an extra one. They get one. If they get two, they get two up to a total of three that the department head would do. That's the way we did it last year and seemed to work real well.
Yeah, I like that way of doing it.
We need a motion.
I made the motion for the three percent pay raises to all employees and then the discretionary three percent that the department heads can utilize.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Motion carried. Item number nine is executive session for a land acquisition. We need a motion to go into executive session.
We move going to executive session for purposes of land acquisition. Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, show a right hand. Executive session.